And here we are. If you've listened in, watched, you're starting to learn about the candidates. As always, I won't ask you to vote for either or any of the candidates that are running, but I'll beg you to vote. We have four people here who are special. Special because they're not only people who say the school system should be better, could be better, but people are saying, "I'm willing to help make it better." So if nothing else, when you see them on the streets, say thank you, because they're willing to give up their own personal time to help our kids get a little better. So why don't we start with an introduction?
Hi, my name is Brendan Ricker. And yeah, I'm excited to run for the school committee. I really want to make a difference in the town of Milford.
Hi, my name is Ferdy Steinman. I'm a resident here at Milford for the last 10 years. My lovely wife Marie and two boys. One is in Woodlands Elementary and 3rd grade, and my other, my oldest son is in Stacy in 7th grade.
Hi, I'm Jen Parsons. Thank you for having me. I'm also a Milford resident. I've been a member of the Milford School Committee for the past six years, and I'm looking forward and hopeful for a third term on the Milford School Committee.
Thank you for the time. My name is Michael Agagianian. I'm a Marine Corps veteran. My wife is a high school teacher. I'm a lifelong Milford resident, and I'm very excited to participate and go for school committee.
I don't know if I should say thank you for your service as a Marine, or thank you for having your wife go to Milford High and take care of our kids. But either way, thank both of you for your service.
I don't know.
Okay, through the luck of the draw, you got the first question, Michael. I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Well, like I said, my name is Michael Agagianian, and I'm a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. I'm a husband, I'm a father, former business executive, entrepreneur, and current business owner. And so I had this unique skill set of tools in my box where I feel I can bring to the school committee, such as, you know, managing the budget. I've run large organizations of over 500, 600 people. I've run multiple facilities and buildings in that, that business across down the East Coast. So managing facilities across a district is very comfortable for me. But most of all, I'm pretty passionate about education, where, you know, if we educate our children correctly and give them the opportunities, that's good for our community as a whole. And it's important to me, my daughter's three and a half, will be entering the school system in Milford in a year and a half. And it's important to me that our school system continues to be great and gets better. I think we have some unique opportunities in our town right now, and I'm excited to dig in and bring an optimistic, creative view to help, you know, solve, solve the problems that we have and continue to build on the, the school system that we have in our town.
Okay, we'll put you on the spot. I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Yeah, so just to remind everyone, I'm Brendan Ricker, and I have a background in exercise science and nutrition. I have a master's in that. I have a master's in business administration as well. And I taught at Sacred Heart University for about five years, and I coached at Fairfield University as well. And there's no greater reward than being involved with people who want to learn. And I myself have had the benefit of a great school system, great support cast of characters, from coaches to teachers, my parents, family members, people in the community. And I want to pay it forward. You know, I feel that my education, my background has brought me to this point in my life, and I want to make sure that all of our students in this town have a similar opportunity. And I think what, what we can accomplish is increasing school safety, increasing community involvement, access to more programs, and overall, just a vision for not just the next five years, but the next 50 years for our schools.
You know I can root for you for this Sacred Heart thing.
I know, I know.
They keep beating up Holy Cross in hockey way too often.
I understand that. I won't hold it personally, but...
Ferdy, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Oh, as I said before, I think you should not vote for me until you know who I am. And I can go and I can tell you that I am a loving father, a husband. I lived in Milford for 10 years, but I think those things are all, everybody here is passionate about children, and we all have a unique skill set. And for me, the, the ultimate goal is that I'm here because I have a passion for children, but more so the fact that I like to solve problems. And having played professional sports, I found sometimes people can sit on the sideline and comment on, on things, and what's going well, what's not going well. Like they say, your best quarterback sits in the, in the stands. I like to get on the field, roll up my sleeves, and having been a teacher, I can identify, and as I said to Jen earlier tonight, that I think all of the teachers, especially elementary school teachers, go straight to heaven, because they have to deal with a lot of our children. And we are very passionate about education in this country. So for me, I think hopefully after tonight, and as people get to know who I am, that they will learn to understand that my goal, I have no agenda. My goal is, is what do we do that we do that's right by our children? Now, I happen to have two kids in the school system, but regardless of having kids in the school system, our future depends on, on those in the school system today, because they are going to be the ones that have the, have to become contributors to society. And we need to raise the next leaders of tomorrow, and that's why I'm here.
Jen?
Great. Yes, again, I'm Jen Parsons, and I've heard a lot of things that resonate with me from the other three candidates sitting here tonight. For me, I also learned I'm going to heaven, so thank you, Ferdy, for filling me on that as a former elementary school teacher.
Definitely.
But I, I've been a teacher. That's been my lifelong career is one in education. I've taught from middle school through, down through 4th grade. I've served as an assistant principal, a principal, and now I work as an assistant superintendent of schools in a neighboring school district. And I think what I've found over the years is I was not the mom who would do a lot in terms of, you know, the bake sales and the field trips and things like that. I found for me, my passion was really working at a higher level in terms of setting policy and looking at the big picture. And I feel that that's a strength for me and something that I've been able to capitalize on professionally, and I've been able to share that knowledge with, that I've learned in my career with the Milford Public Schools. And personally, I've learned from the Milford Public Schools, and I've been able to use that in my profession, and what I've learned from working with lots of other towns and governments, I've been able to bring here and use in my role to support the students and faculty members and administration of the Milford Public Schools. I probably neglected to mention, I do have a personal interest in the Milford Public Schools as well. I have two children. My daughter is a junior, and my son is an 8th grader. And it's really been a pleasure working and serving the community of Milford for the past six years, and we have a lot of interesting things happening right now, and I'd like to be able to continue that work.
Okay, next question to Jen.
Sure.
Three biggest challenges you think the school committee will face coming up?
Sure. Clearly, the first challenge that we're facing is one of growth, and we have, and really an exploding population in terms of numbers of students and families, so we're choosing to come to Milford and take advantage of our school system. And we simply have no place to put them in certain cases, and we need to figure out a solution to what is going to be manageable for our town, and how we're going to best meet the needs of our students and educate them appropriately and with great success. So certainly growth. I would say changes in just the global marketplace, and thinking about how we're going to best educate our students for 21st century careers. We've heard our principal talk multiple times about the fact that jobs are being created. You all work in private industry. I'm sure you know far better than I how quickly jobs change, and the market changes, and the needs change. And we really need to make sure that what we're delivering in our classrooms is appropriate for our students, starting with pre-K and moving all the way up through their senior year of high school. I think probably the third challenge that we would face is really meeting the needs of our diverse student population. And that, that would be addressed by making sure that we're recruiting and hiring people that are familiar faces and ethnicities for our students, making sure that we have the just right instruction for our students, and that we're really helping all of our students rise to their potential.
Ferdy, three biggest challenges you see?
Yeah, I have to agree with you, Jen. In fact, I, when I did my research, and I think this past year, we had like 150 kids that came to the high school where the years before it was an average of around 100. And to your point, there's definitely explosion. I also think the fact that we have to deal with our own successes because of our programs that we do provide, especially if you think about executive functioning, the special needs programs that we do, we see a bigger influx of people coming into, choice into schools. And I think it's because of the quality that we offer here. And in itself, it also then creates that, that potential for teacher burnout, and also putting a lot more stress on the, on the system, on the teachers to be able to continually to deliver at that high pace. And I think we need to become more creative of how we can address that. So, and then again, I think the diversity, I think I've said this before to you, that based on, when I got my passport versus everyone on this panel here got their passport, we are all from, from, from different parts of the world, maybe from different generations, but we all have that and one thing in common, and this is what I love about America and why I'm a citizen here, is that this is the country where you can truly live out your dreams. And children have dreams, and we need to make sure, as you said, we need to equip them for the tomorrow. And this is one of those things where we have that need, and it's a high demand that we need to deliver.
Brendan?
Yep.
Three biggest challenges you see you'll be facing if you're on the school committee?
Yeah, I think they both hit a lot of the things that I've heard out on the, on the streets. So when I've talked to people knocking on doors, they mentioned budget as one thing that they are concerned about. I don't know if it's necessarily a problem, but we just, I know the state legislator just passed the Student Opportunity Act, which adds another billion dollars of educational funding, and we're going to receive some of that, and we're going to have to raise our investment a little bit. It's kind of like a matching 401K program. We have to raise our spending a little bit to get all of the spending that the state will give us for our programs. So I think that's something that we need to absolutely address. Number two, you know, as Jen mentioned, the average high schooler graduating now is going to have 12 different careers throughout their working life. That's a change once every four years. So we need to prepare them to be able to handle whatever changes that they have. And some of those changes might be a bump up in promotion, or it might be a career change at all. So we need to have a diverse set of programs. And I know one thing I've heard from voters as well, is that they're disappointed that their child can't get into Blackstone Valley, because they want to go into programs like that. So maybe even expanding some of those offerings at Milford High School, to not only serve our community, but maybe bring some people from other communities in who can't take advantage of programs like Blackstone Valley. And then the third one, I think, community, and I, and I know the board has previously taken some responsibility and interest in making things more transparent, trying to get more information out there, and I want to continue that. You know, I think we need to, when we set our goals, they should be smart goals, so specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and timeframe. So we should actually define what our goals are by those standards, and really spell it out for the voters as to how, you know, if we, if I'm elected, if anyone's elected to the board, how we are spending our time on Thursday nights. So those are some of my goals that I see as opportunities that are kind of problems.
Michael?
Well, I think we all have very similar issues, and I think a lot of the voters do. I think one of the, our biggest opportunities actually in our town is the English learners, the L program. And, you know, Milford's a very unique community where we naturally speak multiple languages here, which is fantastic. And I think the, the school district has had trouble trying to integrate that knowledge that we have in our community into the schools to help solve the problem, right? And so we have this massive influx of English learners coming through the school system right now, which is putting stress on. And so I think that's a great opportunity to start to strengthen our foreign languages and turn that into a big positive, saying, hey, we can naturally educate our kids to be bi and tri-lingual because of where we live. We have the resources here today. And I think as a district, we need to look at the, as a problem, as a big, big opportunity and solve it at the larger scale. Facilities, this comes up time, time, again, like Jen said, the schools are really bursting. You know, I hear it from, you know, a lot of my, my peers and my friends in town are school teachers. I grew up here, so I, I hear it constantly. So I was at Memorial recently at a PTO meeting, and I overheard some of the principal and vice principal talking about bringing back the temporary classrooms across the...
The modulators.
The modulators, right? Which in town, we all knew were there way too long, you know, for what they're used for. And that just made me sad, you know? So I think facilities, whether, you know, new schools, or better preventive maintenance, or just a plan, a long-range capital plan, which I know the school committee has been working on. And so I think that's a really big issue, opportunity in our town. I know the school committee is going through their long-term learning plan right now to help kind of scope out, you know, what are the services that we need to provide at the high school and our schools, and does the facility match those goals? And I think there needs to be a big focus on that program, and it needs to be, I wouldn't say pushed, fast-tracked, but it needs to be pushed, pushed through, through the system. And then I think the, the other third thing is, for me personally, and through a lot of the voters I've talked to, and again, my friends and peers and in town, is accountability, right? And so Milford has been great at, you know, we're in like the top 10% financially stable towns in Massachusetts, and that's amazing. But our finance committee has done a fantastic job. However, there, I think the, the school system needs to be a bit better accountable to the taxpayer, because we are, as taxpayers, we give the, the school committee $67 million to invest into our children. And I think people forget that that's exactly what the school committee's task to do, is to be the custodians of that investment. And so I think making sure that we're spending money in the right places, that we're accounting for the money, that audits come through clean, and then holding the superintendent and his staff accountable, and make sure that they're, spend that money right is, is the third one.
Ferdy, you get the next one. School choice, very emotional issue in this town. For years, way back, we were breaking even with the number of kids coming in, number of kids going out. The last few years, we have seen a plethora of people leaving, and a pleth, a small amount coming in in comparison. What's your opinion? What can we do?
Yeah, I think I've, I've spoken to a few of the parents that have school of choice out, and I asked them, what's their thinking? What's their rationale? And I think as we discussed the, the challenges that we have here, the beauty about the country and about being in Milford, people have choices. And so therefore, I cannot fault somebody to make that choice. However, I think what we as folks wanting to be on this committee and wanting to run for this is that, how do we make those choices harder to, to make a choice out, but to stay in here? And we need to be able to listen to what are those challenges. And I understand, the wallet is only so big that we get, the government is funding certain things, so we need to become smarter about how we, how we do it. But then again, I think the biggest thing for us is, is that if we understand the why, and why we do the things we do, I think a lot of times people will be able to, want to walk with us, because where we live and where we are in the community is where we would like our kids to, to go to school. And so when we don't see that, it's because sometimes I think that we fail to explain the why, what we are doing, and what's the impact of that. I think if we can get to that point and then become creative, we can definitely help that. But yes, it is a concern that there are people out of, choose out of, to have a choice out of the, the district, but I also think at the same time, they have the freedom, which is great about this country. And there's also a lot of kids coming in as well, and I think that's part of what we see in our programs that we provide from our special needs and, and learning disabilities, is that we do offer that such a great program, and it's part of that success that we have to deal with, is that we have people coming in as well. But obviously, we would love to have that people stay here in the community and have that choice.
Yeah, yeah, Ferdy is correct with everything he said, and you know, to build upon that, like I said in my opening intro, I would love to bring some additional programs in that people are leaving us for. So again, Blackstone Valley would be a good, maybe benchmark to, to look at and see, well, where are you getting your, most of your applicants for? What programs? Is that something that we can realistically, at not a high cost to the taxpayer, add to the high school as is? You know, obviously, we're not focusing just on the high school. There's plenty of kids that choice out at different ages, from whatever reason. Talking to Superintendent McIntyre, he argued that because there are that much of a difference in kids choosing out versus in, that we are actually probably breaking even money-wise, because we're not having to pay additional staff for all the people that are going out. That is an argument that he made to me, that, you know, I don't know what the numbers exactly work out to. And I don't necessarily want to encourage that, and he didn't either, but, you know, I think with additional funding from the state, we're going to be able to offer more staff and faculty, we're going to be able to offer more training for them as well, and then offer more resources to the students. And I know that's something that he's indicated that he wanted to use that money for. So I think with those things in mind, and I think the town has actually started to turn around that connotation of how, what our school district is perceived to be as, and we're starting to actually believe in ourselves again. So I think Milford has a lot of pride, and we should be prideful in our schools and support them.
Michael?
So I have some very specific thoughts on this. And this is a touchy subject, as we all know. And when I talk to, I have some friends as well who choice out, which also makes me sad. And so in talking to them, and just, again, my wife being in the school system, and then talking to our friends and kind of digging into the, I'm a big why guy. I need to understand why. What is the root problem, and why, why are they leaving? We can talk about adding all kinds of programs, but it comes down to the root that we have this influx of English learners. And so when we have this influx of English learners coming in, and they don't have the mastery of the language, and they're taking tests such as the MCATs, and our scores drop, and that's, I think, the root of the problem right now, where that our, our MCAT scores are suffering. And so when people look into rate schools, the only big metric right now is MCAT scores. And I think that's, that's also, it's unfortunate, but it's a reality. And so I think we need to pinpoint that problem, attack the problem right on. And so I think, again, the opportunity, going back to that language, is, you know, trying, try to bring in some support for the teachers, especially in the elementary schools, to make sure that those children who don't speak the language, as well as, you know, somebody who grew up here, have, have the resource and support to get them there, and supporting the, the teachers. I know in the high school right now, they're trying some, where they're doing co-teaching, where they're having teachers or aides who speak the language, the languages needed, such as Spanish or Portuguese. And they're in the, the classroom with the teachers, supporting the teachers. And the feedback I've heard is that they love it, because now they have the kids in the same classroom, they're not segregating them, they're assimilating, and now they have some support. So one of the ideas I had is, hey, you know, the high school does these other little internships where they bus students around from the, the high school down to the lower grades. Well, we have, again, naturally, in our town, bilingual and tri-lingual kids, because of the families, of our, our diversity. So trying unique things where we are busing those students down from the high school to the lower grades to do little internships, to maybe sit into the classrooms of the elementary school, and helping those teachers translate and making sure those kids understand what is going on. So going back to school choice, I think, you know, to really kind of nip, nip it in the bud is to get those MCAT scores back on track, and to do that, I think we really need to, to figure out how to make our district stronger at being able to handle, you know, the disadvantaged students, especially the ones who are, you know, struggling with learning English.
You're probably tired of hearing me ask you the same question I've been asking for too many years.
That's okay. Maybe my answer will be a little different tonight. You know, when I think, and I'll answer this in the first place, as a parent, when I say this, parents are a very fickle group of people. And when you think about your own children, everyone has a different vision of what school should be, and what the experience should be. And as much as we try to have consistency and cohesion in our schools, every student's experience is different. And we did bring in a group last year to help us examine school choice and help us really dig in through some survey work and some focus groups as to why people were school choosing out of Milford. And honestly, the results were incredibly inconclusive. There was nothing that we could say, yep, that's a silver bullet, it's definitely this problem or that problem. Families leave for lots of reasons. They leave because we're big, they leave because we have a more diverse population, they leave because they like the athletic program elsewhere, they, they leave because they had a difficult interaction with a teacher, and they've decided, oh, it's going to be better somewhere else. And one of the interesting things that came out of that survey was there was actually a lot of satisfaction and happiness that people expressed through that. But nevertheless, it is true that if someone makes a choice that's not Milford, it does cost our district money, number one, and it also costs us a lot of really great, strong kids who could really contribute as participants in their hometown. So my feeling on that is, I don't think we have a school choice answer. I think we need to examine, what do we have? What are we offering? What are we bringing in? And I would say, over the past several years, we're bringing in all kinds of things, from the different types of programming at the high school, through a different lens of looking at curriculum and assessment at, at all grades, through some PR moves that the schools are making in terms of really promoting us and feeling good about who we are and what we have to offer. But it's that kind of work that we have to do in terms of kind of tooting our own horn. And, you know, the other piece of this, and we've talked about this with our superintendent a lot too, is communication, and really making sure that we're responding to families, responding to issues, so people understand that there's a way, if, if there is a problem, that it's going to get resolved.
We talk about test scores. Let's expand a little. If I'm deciding, and I got to tell you, I am so happy that I'm talking to four people who have all made the choice to keep their kids in Milford. That is a heck of a statement. Thank you. But I'm coming to Milford, and I see the test scores, and I look all around, and there's a lot of towns around us, that their test scores are better. Fundamental question, will my child get a good education in this Milford system?
Yeah, the answer is yes, definitively yes. Michael brings up a good point about the language barrier. The tests are in English, or, you know, even though it's a math test, the questions are in English, and if you are not strong in English, you're not really assessing their ability to understand math, you're understanding their ability to read English. So there's a little bit of a setup for failure there. Outside of that, overall, yes. Coming to Milford, you're going to have a great education. There are resources for you to take advantage of, even, even despite your, whatever your income level is, there are resources for you to take advantage of. So I want to expand upon that. One of the biggest dictators of how you will do on standardized testing is what your parents' personal income is. So, and that's because they have more resources to help assist the, the students. So I don't know particularly if this would be feasible, but in my opinion, if you want to get better at shooting free throws, you should shoot free throws. So if you want to get better at taking a test, and not do it, no way am I saying should we teach to the test, but if you want to get better at taking a test, maybe some more practice tests would help get as soon as more comfortable with, with that environment.
Now, part two of the question, the numbers are there. Are they fair indicators of our kids' performance?
No.
Why?
Well, I mean, me personally, I'm a terrible test taker. My SAT scores were awful, but I'm someone who works hard. I'm someone who will, you know, burn the midnight oil to learn a concept, so that way I can write a paper better, or study for an exam better. But standardized tests, standardized tests are not good at assessing quality of education. They're just good at assessing just overall intelligence, which is a good and bad thing. But again, from my personal experience, I'm not a good test taker. I don't believe scores reflect accurately how good a student truly is.
Michael, you started down this road of standardized tests. Question, part A, I'm thinking of moving to Milford. Will my child get a good education? And B, are these test scores a good indication of how the children will stack up against other towns?
So to answer yet, A, there's no doubt in my mind that Milford has a, the child would get an amazing education here. I'm very proud of the Milford school system. A lot of my friends I grew up with are doing amazing things. And when you take out, when you look at the numbers, and you take out the, the, the English learners, and start to look at the numbers, I feel very confident we can take our... and start to look at the numbers, I feel very confident we can take our, you know, top 10, 15% and put them against any school in Massachusetts. My wife's a coach of academic decathlon, which is really a, it's a academic team where they get a topic, they study it, they take tests, they do interviews and all this stuff, and I was a judge a few weeks ago, and Milford came in the top three. And that includes, you know, towns like Weston, and all the other towns out there that do really well. And so, I feel very confident that our kids that go through our school system get a very, very good education. But they also get real-world experience where, you know, it's a diverse population. And when you enter the workforce, it's a diverse population, so you're not just getting a good education, you're also getting a life lesson on how to deal with diversity and how to embrace it. So, the second part of the question.
The test scores.
Yeah, test scores, sorry. Yeah, so, I don't think they're a good indication, just right there. You know, the tests are written in English, you know, so if you are a native speaker in Spanish, you're not going to do as well as a native, you know, speaker in English, right there. And so, I don't, I think these tests are very flawed. I think, you know, at a micro scale, they're good at measuring certain things, but at a macro scale, I think they're extremely flawed.
Jen, will my child get a good education in Milford, and are these standardized tests the right metrics to use?
Yes, so the experience that I can use with my own child, children going through the Milford public schools, is they've had an extraordinarily positive experience in Milford. And I see the curriculum, I see rigor, I see kids coming home excited about what they're learning, and I see them progressing. And we have many ways of measuring how kids can grow and demonstrate success. And one really nice thing about the MCAS, and one way that it's changed, is it really allows us to look at a student's amount of growth that he or she makes over time. So it's not just a raw score, it's our growth. And we're able to dig down and really look at different populations of students, how are boys doing compared to girls, how are white students doing compared to non-white students, and how are we doing on this standard or that standard? And that's, at the beginning of time, the MCAS was really designed to help us measure our work as educators against the curriculum. Are we doing our job, are we teaching what we should? And I think there are a lot of things that I heard, in terms of things that we can do to help continue on that trajectory, where we want to see students making growth, and yet for sure, we want to prepare them. We always talk about, we don't want to teach to the test, but if you don't prepare kids for the test, and especially a really complex test, like the MCAS, where you're asked to read three different passages, and answer higher-level inference and questions on those three passages, and do it in writing, and refer back to text, and show evidence, if you've never experienced that, that's, you're not going to do well. And I think our teachers, and I've heard teachers talk about this even at my own kids' parent-teacher conferences, these are the things we're working on in terms of helping our children grow. In terms of the test scores, you know, MCAS is this very, very public measure, it's in every newspaper, and you're ranked, and some districts are celebrating because, yeah, we're number one, and then, oh, no, next year, you're number 20, and what happened there? But we have to keep remembering that there are so many other ways of measuring our students' success, and what's happening to our students after school. Are those who want to get into a two-year or four-year college getting there, are those who want to enlist in the military able to do that, are they able to become gainfully employed? How are we doing on the SATs, how are we doing on the multiple APs that we offer in our high school? And, you know, to me, one of the biggest measures, never mind all that, is, are they coming home happy? Are they proud to be a student at Milford High School? Are they involved in the many activities that we have? And you're not going to read that in the headlines when you see, oh, this is how, what Nish said we did, in terms of scores. But it's a very big picture, and the MCAS scores are certainly an important part, they have a place, but there are a lot of other measures as well that are just as important.
Ferdy, will my child get a good education in the Milford system, and are the MCAS the right numbers to use as a monitor?
Thank you for the question, yeah. Your child will get a good education. I'm also from the firm belief that we can always do better. And I think that strive to do better is something that we can install, not just as the teachers accountable for it, but as parents, as children, to have an open growth mindset. Because if I look at the system today, and yes, to me, it was surprising coming from a different background, looking at MCAS, because, again, that's a snap time, and yes, we love data, I love data, and I like to look at metrics, how we measure things like that. But at the end of the day, I'm more interested in, do I have a pupil, a student, leaving the school system prepared for life? And math, to me, as an example, is showing critical thinking, how do I solve problems? We utilize math as a way to teach that, but the skill set that you need to take from that, I think we can put some emphasis on that, how do we apply what I've learned? It's not just doing math and doing equations, but it's critical thinking, solving problems. That's where I think we need to think about it. So, yes, our children will get good education, I think we can always do better, and that's not a saying that we are not doing good. I think we are doing as good as we can with where we are now. And my dream, as a goal, if we sit here tonight, is for whoever gets into this position, is to think about how do we provide that. The scores, yes. I mean, and if I look at the scores, I looked at the elementary schools and the high school are in par, it's an average, it's not below, it's not high. We have a challenge in the middle school, but then again, you look at the middle school, with Stacy Middle School as an example, we are limited for space, there's a lot more teachers. Again, it comes back to, there's other factors that play in, but when you look at scores, we don't necessarily have the picture, especially if people just look at their report on the internet or in newspapers. They see a number, but they don't understand what's behind that, what's really the challenges that that district is dealing with. And that's where I say, it gets back to the why. I love when you say the why, because if we can get to the why, it is what it is, and how people understand, it's not just the school's responsibility, it's everybody, the children, as well as the parents, everybody in the community has to be involved to raise this future of tomorrow. So, yeah, I mean, scoring, it's a measurement, but I think we should think about it more broadly and more outside the box.
Michael, security, always the scariest thing, to pick up a newspaper, or open the television, and see bad things happening to good kids. We invested a considerable amount of money, I mean, for a little town like Milford, it was $600,000 extra dollars to put in, I can't call it SWAT team, I was told, but the security team. Is that the right investment, or is there something we should be doing in addition or instead of?
So, if our law enforcement recommended that, and it was reasonable in the budget, then I absolutely do think it's the right thing to do. In our town, you know, the high school, for example, is a very difficult school to secure. When it was built in the 70s, it was built as a, I saw your smirk, it was built as an open concept, right? And so, the amount of doors in that facility are ridiculous. And so, I do think it was the right choice because of when our schools were built, how they're built, and the concepts. So, yeah, I think it was a good decision.
You bring up a fundamental question, because the easiest thing to secure the school is build a wall, build a 10-foot wall, have one door in, one door out, but now you're trading away an experience. You're, I mean, Berlin Wall had a point, not a good one, but it made its point. Anybody ever went through Checkpoint Charlie, and you saw the minefields? It was a sobering experience. You know, we didn't really think that was the right way for our kids to be brought up. So the idea was, what else can we do? And that's where the security force, the non-SWAT SWAT team. Jen, what do you think?
What I think is it's, safety is the number one, it's the most important thing, you're absolutely right. And I remember as a parent, right after one of the school shootings, driving up to drop my son off at Brookside, and seeing a cruiser sitting right outside, and just feeling that sense of maybe a little bit of false relief that it was sitting there, but relief just the same. And I think what I have seen happening in the Milford public schools is a really great relationship between our school district and our town's safety personnel, both police and fire. And would I say that we don't need those four police positions? No, I would never say that. One, we need them, we have a lot of things going on in our school, and I've been in places where you'll call the police department and say, we really need some help today, the crossing guard is not here today, can anybody be sent out? Nope, sorry, you know, we don't have enough staff on today. And that's really frustrating, and when I heard what the reaction and response time was going to be with this additional number of members of our force, that was reassuring. And to know that they're in our schools, they know the ins and outs, they know potential hiding places, they know the landscape inside these buildings. We're unfortunately living in a day and age where that is needed, and I would certainly not be an advocate for, you know, metal detectors and walls and all kinds of craziness, because that's, that's just not the kind of atmosphere we want our kids to enter. It's hard enough that, yes, our doors are locked, and we have all these practices, and I think you mentioned earlier, you've got to know how to do things, and you've got to know how to respond. But I think we've been very attentive to safety in our school district. I think, I heard someone, you know, you can always do more with everything, but I think we're in a good place, as good as anybody can be.
And we have changed. I mean, first year in that school, when we thought of terrorism, that was the neighbor's dog coming and doing bad things on the bushes. Today, the kids unfortunately have to deal with a new reality, and we have to, too. Ferdy, what do you think? Was it worth adding the police officers? See, I'm not saying SWAT, because I was corrected.
No, I would say that it's not up for debate, I think safety comes first. It's our children, and I think as I would, I think about my wife, she always says, you touch my children, you'll see the tiger come out, and I don't want to mess with her. She's not so big, but she's so consistent. But all jokes aside, this is serious. I think we do not compromise when it comes to safety, but I would say this, that the threat, as I've experienced over the years, is coming within the school, as much more so than, I think, the threat from outside. And I think we need to spend some time, it gets back to the why, understanding what's happening in the schools and what's happening, because our children are experiencing a lot more pressure. And I think at the same time, we would be negating the idea of just safety, if we just looked at safety per se, for the sake of safety, but also to look at what's the emotional, and I know the school have, in their strategic planning, had put in the emotional training and development, but we need to understand that, because that's where children have to be guided through, that there is choice, there is, there's always an answer, there's always a way out of this, that's not the last resort to get to, because that is where we have to deal with. And if we can prevent that by looking at raising up the overall standards in the school emotionally, continue to invest like we do, I think then the combination of that is a great place to be. But just to think about safety in itself, it's not negotiable, it has to be in place. But at the same time, let's think about the other side of that coin.
Yeah, absolutely, the physical presence of officers on schools, campuses, or the ability for them to rapidly respond, it's great, it's worth every penny for that safe peace of mind, and hopefully they never, ever have to respond to an incident. Ferdy's right with the other side of it, you know, the internal parts of safety in the schools. And I think, you know, we as adults in the community, we as leaders in the community, because stepping up to run for office are absolutely leaders, we should be proactive in that, too. The world has changed rapidly over the past, you know, minute, we've, I've been talking even, and we all need to be responsible for how everyone interacts in society. Right now, a lot of people would say our country is very polarized, especially at the national level, and we as adults in this community, we can bring that away. You know, it's great that we have elections that are supposed to be non-political, they're just simply about the candidates themselves, and I think we can be examples to our kids to show, hey, this is how we have a conversation, this is how we agree to disagree. You know, so, again, just kind of wrap it all up with, you know, it's the social-emotional side of things, as well as the external threats, and, you know, I want to continue to develop all safety protocols for all those avenues.
Jen, when my daughter was considering what school to go to, now, obviously, I wanted her to stay at the center of the universe, but like any parent, we had to go check out the Faye School and all the private schools around. I walked away with mixed emotions. Number one was, wow, they're spending $21,000 per kid, this was 15 years ago, they had a lot more resources to throw at each child, but they didn't get, when I asked the little girl, very elegant, very, I mean, her speech was wonderful, but I asked her, where are you from? Hopkinton. How much do you interact with Hopkinton kids? And I said, oh, we never do. And that scared me, because I really loved what I got out of Milford, not just education, but, like you said, getting ready to deal with the world. And what really cemented it for me and my darling bride, was we asked the principal of Brookside, said, Jose, what can I do to get the best education for my daughter, or son, sorry, Ferdy, my daughter in Milford? If I asked you that question, how would you answer it?
What can I do?
What can I do as a parent to assure my daughter gets the best education she can out of Milford?
Well, I mean, I don't know if this is a school committee answer or not, but really, I think you hit the nail on the head, parental involvement with one of your answers earlier. When you're involved as a parent, that really changes the world for your child. So, some children will have that opportunity, but if you are a parent, you're sitting there wondering, what should I do? Should I speak up, should I join something, should I be part of something? There's a forum going on at Milford High School right now, where we're asking families to, we're all sitting here, we're asking families, you know, let us know what you need. And schools put out a lot of information, and they give a lot of advice, and it's very easy for people to walk into schools and say, I don't need to listen to that, because I've been to school, so I understand school. And I think the best thing a parent can do is really listen, listen to your child, which gets into some of the social-emotional realm that you referred to earlier, and it's listen to the schools and partner with the schools. And, you know, I feel like as a parent, I speak up a lot, probably more than I should, more than my parents ever did, but I think if you don't have a voice as a parent, you're shortchanging your child a little bit. And we have a lot of resources, I think for some families, schools can be a little bit intimidating, because you're not used to the routine, or maybe you didn't have a great experience yourself, but the more that you can be part of things, and support the schools to the best of your ability, we have to partner together.
Ferdy, I come up to you and say, what can I do to get the best education in Milford for my child?
Be involved, is my short answer. I think, when I look at this, I mean, and I'm not ignorant to the fact that parents, both parents, we are in a society now where both parents work, in some cases, I think it's out of choice that they do it, in some cases, it's out of necessity. And when you have parents that have to work and then come back and have that involvement with children, it is taxing, it's tiring. I mean, I know, my two boys, and I have my wife, who was, as a pharmacist, decided to stay home to be with the boys, because I said to her, this is the only opportunity you have right now, and to make an impact in their lives, because once they get out of here and they go into real life, we've done what we could have done, then we just pray, and hope for the best. But hopefully, we've done and installed those values. But I do know that it's hard for, it's easy for me to sit here and say, be involved, get involved, but I also understand, there's parents that are both working, and to try and get them to, again, I mean, I get back to the why, is if we can get them to understand that this investment, this was your choice to have children, it's your investment, and it's your investment in your future, as my dad used to say to me, I'm nice to you because I know you're going to choose my old age home one day. So, but I was facetious when he said it, but it's because that's who's going to take care of the future, and if we don't put that investment now, and we abdicate that role to teachers, to school committee members, that is a sad place when we do that, because, I mean, I love children, but I love my own two boys, unequal guys, I might not always like them, but I always love them. But to take the whole community, we love them, but you cannot, we all have to get along, and I know it sounds so fluffy, and it sounds like, well, what's the real programs? I think as we get involved, we just need to kind of come alongside with people and give them the why, and it is emotional, it is that EQ to show them, this is how we're going to help you get involved. And there's small things you can do, it's not big things, we don't expect you to go and run the next school-based program, but small things, just be involved at the end of the day, have a conversation with your child, how was school? Not, was it good? Yes, no. Have open- Have open-ended questions. Tell me about it. What are you struggling with? And parents don't even have the time nowadays to sit around the table, dinner table, and do things. So, yes, I might be a little bit of a philosophical kind of airhead dreamer, but I do believe if we focus on those things, that's what children want. They want that security.
Yeah, so if you're asking that question, I would assume that you're kind of like 99% there as doing all the right things for your child. So I would challenge you to say, well, can you get involved to help other children who maybe have parents who are working two jobs, or each working a job, or one's working two jobs, whatever it might be? Could you help support them a little bit? And just be more involved in the community. I don't have any kids yet, and God bless you three for having them and raising them. I know it's challenging in so many different ways, and I'm sure it's exhausting too. I know it's exhausting too. But if you can, as a parent yourself, if you're asking that question, if you can help bring someone else along with you, I think that would be a great way to help make both your child's experience and someone else's child's experience really meaningful for our community.
Michael?
I think I have a little unique answer on this one. My mother was a single mother, my father died very young, when I was very young, and so my mother had to raise me by herself, she was a social worker. And so she was involved, as much as she could be. However, she led me through life and modeled life. And so she was involved, and I think that's a nice answer, but parents can be very too involved, right, which can actually hurt the child. And so I think, you know, leading your child and modeling for your child life, I think, is really the most valuable thing that you can do. You know, if the child's asking for help with homework and you do it for them, because you're involved, you're not helping them. But if you lead them through it and model for them, now you're really teaching them a life lesson on how to get through it. But most importantly, you're supporting them. And so that's, I guess that's my answer.
You know, it's funny, because my youngest will tell you, she was traumatized as a child, because she remembers the dance I missed and the field trip I missed. And they kept saying, you know, I don't think that's too bad of odds, since I made every field trip you ever signed me up for, and every dance that was there except for the one. She goes, no, I'm traumatized. But, you know, you look back, and I can feel really proud of what she's done. My oldest is now teaching special needs in Milford, you know, so she's made a conscious decision to stay here and help the kids. So, you're right. And when I was a kid, I remember my dad, he couldn't speak English, but if they told him we had something at school, he would show up, put his little hat on and his little coat, and he'd be in the audience, no clue what's going on, but he and my mother were told, if you want to support your child, you have to show up, and they were there. And it made me feel special. So, you know, the kids do notice. We got a one-minute lightning round. Jen, I'm from Milford, why should I vote for you?
I care about schools, I care about this community. I've been a resident of Milford for 20-some-odd years at this point. I've chosen to live my life here, I've chosen the public schools, and I've chosen to support and work with and for the Milford Public Schools. We have a lot of work ahead of us, I don't feel like my work is done, I don't feel like my passion is dried up yet, and I have a lot of hope for the school system, I have a lot of faith in the school system, and I really respectfully ask the voters to afford me another three years to continue the work.
Ferdy, why should I vote for you?
I am passionate, I care for children, but more importantly, I don't care necessarily if you vote for me, because I think you need to vote for the person which you have the confidence that they will do what's right for the children. And B, if I'm, I'm looking at all my candidates here, whether I'm elected or not, it's not going to change anything in what I do. My involvement still stays the same. I don't need to be a school committee member in order to get involved. So, I think you need to make that choice, who you feel authentic and who is going to support and have the children at heart.
Yeah, so I may be new to town, or relatively new to town, but I want to live here.
Only 10 years.
Only two years, only two years.
Oh, two years.
Yeah. But I want to, you know, be here forever. I want to raise my kids here, I want them to go to the schools, I want them to see what I saw in this town, what my wife and I saw in this town when we bought our house here. It's a vibrant community, we have a lot of great things in and outside of the schools. And when we moved here, I just felt this passion to want to get involved and want to serve. So, I want to bring that passion every day, to every single meeting, to everything with our constituents, and make the schools as best we can.
Michael?
My name is Michael Agajanian, I'm a veteran of the Marine Corps, I'm a former business executive, entrepreneur, current business owner, a husband, a father, but most importantly, I care about the success of our community, and the children are the key to that.
And I just want to say thank you to all of you. Makes me feel good that I can honestly say, I'd have a hard time right now making a choice. All of you are passionate, are well-spoken, have the right intentions, more importantly, love our kids. You know, I joke about it, I've got 4,500 kids in the school system, you know, none of them are any more special or any less special than the other 4,499 or what comes out. But it's great to see that the voters have a solid, solid choice to pick two of you to lead us. And then hopefully, the other two will come back next year, you know, and keep it going, because every year, we cycle through, you know, I mean, you're signing up for the life of four. You get seven members, and to get anything done, you've got to get four of them to agree. It's a lot easier in a FinCom where we need eight. But FinCom, Planning Board, School Committee, Selectmen, there's a common thread of love for Milford, love for the kids in Milford, love for the seniors who built Milford. I think that's what makes me feel this is the center of my universe. So, again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
For stepping up and offering to help and doing what we need. And as always, wow, you've got four great choices. Get to know all four, you can watch their individual shows that we have on YouTube at That Milford Show, you can watch, obviously, this Candidates Night, you can go to the high school, which I think is the coolest thing, to have candidates talk to the kids, because they are our future. You can go to the Senior Center and experience the senior view. Just get out, please vote, get to know who represents you the best way you feel, and Milford will always be in good hands if we keep that. So thank you again to our six loyal viewers. May God bless, may tomorrow be a better night than tonight, and get out and vote.